Clock, I will call this meeting to order. Today is October 22nd. The agenda was properly posted on October 21st. All three districts are present. I would like to call the pastor Chase Parsons up. He will be doing leading our prayer and also the pledge of allegiance. He was raised in a deeply faith driven family in Fairview, Oklahoma, and felt called to ministry from a young age while serving at Crossroads Church. After graduating from the University of Oklahoma and experiencing the sudden loss of both parents in 2004, he committed his life fully to serving others through worship, outreach and community ministry. That calling ultimately led to the establishment of the OKC Dream Center in 2010, which he now leads alongside inner city church to reach, rescue and restore people across Oklahoma City. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Well, I, I, I'm very honored to be here amongst the, the leadership and authority that has been placed by God over, over this, the district and the county and the state here. And we just, I just want to open up in prayer. Lord God, we, we come to you humbly and we ask that your, your guidance would lead us to being the answer to your son's prayer that Lord, your kingdom would be done on earth as it is in heaven. And how that, how that is accomplished is, is through us. You using us to establish that, to establish heaven on earth. And Lord, we just ask that you would guide us. Your spirit would go before us and you would be the provision of the peace, the wisdom and the unity in order to bring the greater good to all Oklahomans in this state and everyone so that dreams can be achieved and the greater, the greater good for this state would be achieved. So Lord, we ask right now that your kingdom of heaven would be advanced and hope would be unleashed and poverty would be disrupted and excellence and unity and freedom would remain for this state. And we ask it all in Jesus' name, amen. Now would you join me as in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor and for all that you do for District One and Oklahoma City. Okay. We have minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for October 15th?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Motion passes. Alright, I forgot to vote. Okay. So the second item will be we're current agenda items. Claims, is there anyone here for claims? Motion to approve, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Blanket purchases, is anyone here? Thank you.
There are no changes.
Motion to approve the blanket report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Central purchasing department?
Morning, this is for the award recommendation for project 26285-3, design build courthouse handicap elevator. We sent invitations to bid to our registered vendors as well as multiple other online platforms. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on September 12th and had three attendees present. One bid was received from Thompson General Contracting. This was discussed in, in the infrastructure committee meeting held on October 14th. And that was voted to, where they voted to accept the bid from Thompson General Contracting in the amount of $84,593.43.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the bid.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
This next one is a recommendation for P26285-02, design build courthouse 94 HVAC project. We sent this invitation to bid to registered vendors and multiple online platforms as well. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on September 10th with 12 attendees present. One bid was also received on this project as well from Orkut Mechanical Contractors. This was discussed on October 14th in the infrastructure committee where they voted to recommend to the OCC to reject the bid. The one proposal received and the reason for that rejection is along with low vendor turnout and the high dollar bid amount. It's raised some concerns that maybe the project needs to be reevaluated entirely and possibly come back with a new scope or identify other alternatives. That would be our recommendation.
You're on number six, correct? On your agenda?
Number five.
Five, okay. Any questions? Motion to, is there a motion?
Yep, motion to reject proposal.
Second.
Motion to approve?
No, and motion to reject the proposal.
Motion to reject. Aye.
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 Motion to reject approved. Number six.
Number six is the bid opening for CW26087 carpet and flooring installation. First bid is from Brian's Flooring and we did receive two separate proposals from them. So there's two envelopes to open. Salazar Flooring. C2 Construction. Monarch Construction. Danny Bennefield. And Floor Designs, and that concludes the bid opening.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion that the bids be tabulated?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Okay, we have the consent agenda, which would be from seven through 16. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, please, sir.
Second.
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, now we're headed to District Two, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. This is discussion and possible action regarding a coat drive to support the Christmas connection. This is something that District Two on behalf of the county facilitates nearly every single year, right around Christmas time. This year it'll be from November the 24th, which is the week of Christmas, Thanksgiving through the week of Christmas. And this effort will gather donated used and new coats and collection boxes placed on county properties and throughout the community to provide winter coats for those in need. And with that, I will motion the item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Engineering, I think Stacy's up, V3, this is V3.
Yeah, item 18 is a bridge in District Three. It's in the city of Arcadia on Westminster Road, which is a county section line road. This is to sign the utility and right away affidavits. It's the last step for us to get a bid letting date from ODOT. We anticipate we'll be able to build this project in 2026.
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
And item 19 is a like item. It's in District Two. It's a bridge over the Canadian River on Luther Road. It is a utility encroachment affidavits. It's the last step in the process. Hopefully we'll get a bid letting date and build this project in 2026 as well.
I'll make a motion to approve this?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. So we're on number 20, is that also you Stacy?
Yeah, I'm on the right away on 10th Street, just west of Sooner Road. It abuts a property owned by Phillips Petroleum. They found some hydrocarbons in the groundwater there. And this is the second time you've seen this item. The first time they asked if we would go along with them into getting a land use restriction on that property so that no groundwater could be taken out. We agreed with that a few months ago and now this is actually the, the document that restricts any kind of groundwater being taken out in that location.
Motion approved.
And we also have a document that you need to sign as well. We have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Planning commissioner, commission? Is anyone here?
Eric's at the dentist right now, so I'll take this one. This is a final plat. It's in District Three. It's a corner of Waterloo and Sooner Road. There's five lots on that property. The planning commission approved it unanimously. There was no protests. So it's, it's a good, good final plat and recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved final plat.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Sheriff?
Good morning, this is the first step in an application we're making to get some TSET money for, for several years now, we've been going around, not in an off, I'm sorry, an overtime project enforcing alcohol laws, oversale at, at restaurants and other establishments, and making sure that vendors aren't selling underage people. This is basically the same project, just it's enforcing the tobacco stuff, making sure that they're not selling underage people that aren't old enough to buy tobacco products. So doesn't, doesn't affect staffing or anything. It's all overtime based, so it's a good project.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Treasurer's report?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, we are here to ask for some temporary cash transfers. This is for general fund cash flow purposes. We're requesting 5 million out of highway cash. That will leave a balance of 8.8 million in cash. The most we've ever borrowed in one fiscal year for highway is 10 million. The second request is for CBRI. One, we're requesting 1 million and it'll leave 3 million in the fund. The most we've ever borrowed in a fiscal year for that is 2 million. Our third request is capital improvement regular. The request is for 1 million. It's going to leave 5 million in cash in that fund and the most we've ever borrowed in a fiscal year is 4 million.
Christie, will you remind us, this is standard procedure?
It is, yeah, as long as you're a budget board county, allow statutes allow you to borrow from other funds when you run low on cash on general fund. That happens every year because our property taxes haven't even gone on the street yet. Unfortunately, our expenses are one twelfth at a time, meaning medical payroll and the jail. So while our expenses are going out one twelfth at a time, our revenue isn't having even, the bulk of our revenue for our budget hasn't even started coming in yet. So this is, the statute does say it has to be repaid to the funds on or before the end of the fiscal year. And of course, I bring it here. If it's a fund, you have to get approval from the fund that, for the, from the officers that are over the fund. So before I come here and ask for anything, say from the commissioners' funds or anything, the treasurer always looks within their own funds first. So we've done a total of 9 million already. And this will be a seven, so, and it'll be excised board approval tomorrow.
You anticipate this being repaid in January?
Yes, it'll, determining when the tax bills go out, yeah. Normally we get it repaid in May, mid-January.
Are there any projects in your districts that would be in jeopardy if this happened until January?
No, not at all. It, it generally does not affect our special revenues, bottom line here.
Yeah. So just asking for approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have one person here for citizens' participation. I think it's Reed Robert Summerlin, is he present? The floor is yours for three minutes.
Thank you everyone for your time. I just want to be a super brief, my name is Robert Summerlin. I'm with Hertz Rentals. We're not the car company, Hertz. We rent construction equipment, HVAC systems, temporary cooling, heating generators. If you ever have any emergencies in the city or in the county where you need some temporary power, HVAC systems, things like that. We're a part of the Omnia Cooperative, which is a cooperative program that the county can use to rent equipment without going through the bidding process. And I just wanted to introduce myself and my local rep Natalie. We're going to be going around to the districts and we have some accounts with all three districts with your warehouses out there. Haven't seen a lot of revenue, but it's just because we're not in front of you enough. And I just wanted to introduce myself and our company to the board. And that's pending your questions, that's basically all I have. We're a great company, please use us. And I'll leave my cards with your people over here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session?
Motion to recess.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now recessed into executive session.
Okay, we are back. Do I have a motion to return from executive session?
Motion to return.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have item twenty-seven on the agenda and we're going...do I have a motion?
Motion to disclaim subject pending back taxes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. We also have the last item on the agenda, number twenty-eight.
Motion of proceedings discuss.
Do I have a...twenty-eight and twenty-nine?
Item twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine. Do we have a motion?
Motion of proceedings discuss.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we're gonna go ahead and move into...matter of fact, we have a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Okay, we are now adjourned and now we're gonna move into PBA. The agenda was properly posted on October twenty-first. All three trustee members are present. Is there a motion to second...is there a motion and a second to approve the minutes for October fifteenth?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. We have also reoccurring...
Motion to free claim.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. We have item number three, departmental items. Who's...
Item number three is a lease agreement between the PBA and the district attorney's office for storage space and additional eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-nine square feet at seventy-four oh one northeast twenty-third.
Is this the attachment or is this additional?
Thank you.
Motion to receive documents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
We used PBA bond funds to put a brand-new roof on that property. What you're looking at is work in progress documenting what would be done both in the outside and the inside of the building. In the inside, you'll see what we had to work with when demolition began. The back page is what the end result will be once racking is in place. You'll see various stages of progression on the inside. In total, the district attorney will occupy eighteen thousand five hundred and eleven square feet of space in that building. And I'm happy to see this project move forward in this way. So, would you please approve that lease agreement?
Could you mention the cost as far as what the DA's office is paying us?
Yes, they're in there at seven dollars and twenty cents a square foot.
Can you calculate that for me?
The total annual number, the annual rent is a hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents annually.
Got you. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve lease agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Do we have number four? Well, is that yours?
Parking spot.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number five is...
Motion approved.
Is an agreement to reserve twenty parking spaces for an event...twenty parking spaces to be cordoned off in Metro One. The twenty spaces will be paid for...I think Renee can speak to that in advance.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, commissioners and chief deputies. So, the judges are hosting a law day for legislators on October twenty-ninth and it's to show the legislators what goes on in the Oklahoma County courthouse. You know, we're always seeking to help provide information and we've got a full morning planned for them with various dockets, et cetera. We don't want the legislators to have to come here and try to find a place to park and pay and that kind of thing. So, we have gone to the Oklahoma County Bar Association and they have agreed that they will pay for parking for the legislators. And Keith had indicated he could cordon off those spaces for them. So, we're just asking to pay in advance for those twenty spaces. I think Keith said it was ten dollars a day so that we can have our legislators park somewhere. It's hard to get around downtown these days.
Keith, I have a question for you.
Thank you.
Is there any way we can cover that expense?
I don't see why not if you decide to do so. The legislators and those people that do visit will get to see what happens in Metro One with the congestion and the confusion. So, that might be an eye-opener as well.
Maybe we'll bring that up at another meeting.
Sure.
But, motion to approve?
Motion to reserve the parking spaces.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. We do not have any citizen participation. Yes, come on up, Renee.
I just wanted to thank you.
You're very welcome.
Whether we tire or not, the fact that you're reserving and making out the cost and the justice...
Yeah, we definitely have to have interaction with members of the state capitol in order to get things done. Okay, so I don't see anyone for citizen participation. Seeing that no one has signed up. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion has passed. We are adjourned. Thank you.